Hafedeh, good afternoon. Ymina Trintaisai, Nalahez, Lieutenant Guam is back in session. We're on the second reading. And we are on Bill number 298-36 LS. Sponsored by Talina Cruz Nelson and Elsie Pito Terlahe. On that, on Bill number 298-36 LS, Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, if I may, I do apologize, not on the bill, but I'd like to do a notwithstanding motion.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity, notwithstanding the House rules. I move to waive Section 1.02(c)(10) of the Standing Rules. Madam Speaker, this motion is to allow legislative staff and members of the Legislative Employees Association for the 36 Guam Legislature to observe the 2022 Halloween Spirit Week. So I'm hoping that you can allow us the opportunity, Madam Speaker, notwithstanding.
On that motion, notwithstanding the rules, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion passes.
Sisos Masi, Madam Speaker, thank you.
Thank you. So we're again back on second reading, Bill number 298-36 LS, sponsored by Talina Cruz Nelson. Acting Majority Leader, Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to set it aside at this time.
On the motion to set aside Bill number 298-36 LS, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill number 311-36 COR, Senator Frank Blas Jr. Jr. and Joe S. Augustine. Senator Taitegui, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I make a motion to that we move into the Committee of the Whole as this Bill 311-36 is an appropriation bill and ask that we go into the Committee of the Whole.
Madam Speaker.
Vice Speaker, on the motion?
Yes, on the point of information and clarification, the author of the legislation, as you say that we're still on 311-36 COR, if we can just allow the author of the bill to work on it, I do believe he's walking right on in. So if we can just take a second recess, just on that. Or are we moving? On the motion, Madam Speaker, this temporarily set Bill 311-36 COR, just set it aside as we wait for the...
Senator Taitegui, would you withdraw your motion?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you. On the motion to withdraw, that motion, is there any objection? No objection, motion passes. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, and I may, I don't know if it's, I think it would be a notwithstanding or that we move to put 340-LS...
Set aside Bill 311-36 COR.
Move to set Bill 311-36 COR aside until we get the members in, Madam Speaker.
All right, on that motion, is there any objection? No objection, Bill 311-36 is set aside. Bill number 257-36 LS, sponsored by Senator Shelton. Senator Rangel, you are recognized. We're on Bill 257-36 LS.
Madam Speaker, before, I do apologize, maybe to just set aside Bill 257-36 LS is introduced by Senator Shelton to the side as we get more information.
There's a motion to set aside Bill number 257-36 LS. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're on Bill number 306-36 COR, sponsored by Senator Joe S. Augustine and others. Is there a motion? Bill number 306-36, Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I moved at 340-...
306-36.
On the motion to set aside, Madam Speaker, Bill 306-36 COR, please.
Are you making a motion to set aside? There's a motion to set aside Bill number 306-36 COR. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill number 340-36 LS, sponsored by Joe S. Augustine and others. Bill 340-36, I understand the panel is here for Committee of the Whole, so pursuant to our Standing Rules, we will resolve into the Committee of the Whole for Bill number 340-36 LS to be chaired by the Acting Chairman of Appropriations, Senator Rangel.
The Committee of the Whole is called to order. Materials for the Committee of the Whole are in the shared session Google Drive folder, labeled 102522, Committee of the Whole. Proposed amendments must be submitted in writing to the clerk via email, 36glsession@gmail.com. Amendments not in writing will be called out of order. Here are the rules of engagement. There will be three rounds for discussion. We will have two rounds of questions for the panel with each senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including responses. Time to speak may not be yielded from more than one member to another. A member who yields that member's time on a question yields all of that member's time on that question and may not later speak, even if all the time yielded was not used. That's Section 102d3. After completion of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused. The third round is for amendments or comments to speak on the bill. After we complete discussion of the bill, I will allow the sponsor to close and I will entertain a motion for the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, followed by a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole, at which time I will report the bill as recommended by the Committee of the Whole. I will now call upon the panel guests and for the Sergeant-at-Arms to swear them in and for their introduction.
Please raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, we all affirm that any and all information you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Mr. Chair, under oath, you may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we are on Bill number 340-36 LS. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, you are recognized for an opening statement on the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, if I may, before I start, if we could just ask the kind folks of the University of Guam, for the sake of the listening audience, just to introduce themselves and their titles because they're representing the University of Guam, and I want to thank them for being here, please.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Please introduce yourselves, members of the panel.
So I'm Randy Weigand, I'm the Vice President of Administration of Finance.
Hafedeh, good afternoon. My name is Rachel Cupacab. I'm the university's budget officer.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity and of course having University of Guam introduce themselves and this legislation that I know that they fully support, which is an act to amend Section 13 of Part III of Chapter Two of Public Law 36-107, the fiscal year 2023 budget law relative to the University of Guam's capital improvement, capital improvement fund, Mr. Chair. The fiscal year 2023 budget law requires that the University of Guam allocate 1.15 million from its general operations appropriations to the University of Guam's Capital Improvements Fund for the purpose of paying the lease agreements related to the Student Success Center and Engineering Access. This language, Mr. Chair, and colleagues, is also present in the fiscal year 2022 budget. The fiscal year 2023 budget law also included language that will allow for the continuing appropriations from fiscal year 2022. This means that the funding allocated in fiscal year 2022 for this same project can be used this fiscal year since the construction of the engineering annex has yet to begin. Mr. Chair, the University of Guam has testified that they are prepared to utilize the fiscal year's 2022 funds to begin making payments toward the lease agreements. The flexibility provided by 340-36 will allow the University of Guam to address any operational shortfalls that they may have for fiscal year 2023 and will allow the university to ensure all funds appropriated and allotted will be used to help strengthen the university's financial position in light of its upcoming WASS accreditation review next year. And, Mr. Chair, I'd be remiss if I didn't know that this bill was introduced by the Good Oversight Chair on Finance and Budgeting, Mr. Joe S. Augustine. And I want to note for the record that we do again extend our condolences for the loss of his loved one and that he really wanted to be here, but because he's taking care of those personal matters, we pray that for the spirit of his lost one. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I do know that the university is here and my colleagues may have questions and they said that they're prepared to make this body, August body, better understand the reason for the need of the legislation. I'd be also remiss again if I didn't thank the SGA Student Body Association for also bringing this concern up to both Senators S. Augustine and myself and literally listening to the reasoning why this legislation was needed. And I want to thank Senator Joe S. Augustine for truly stepping up to the plate as the Oversight Chair, Finance and Budget, to see the realization and the need for this legislation and working together with him, for me, working together with him and of course the SGA and then working closely with the university to get this legislation going. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I wait for my colleagues to ask the pertinent questions to the university. Sign them on, see.
Thank you.
On behalf of Senator S. Augustine, too.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. All right, we will now begin round one of questions, beginning in the back row. Senator Taitegui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, and thank you to the panel that's here today. Can you just give me an explanation about why the change and what is going to basically suffer because of the change in your budget? There was a certain amount that was set aside for certain projects there at the University of Guam, but now you're changing show to May, giving you that flexibility. So what is the big change that's going to happen?
Well, in my view, the change is a good change because we had asked for the language to be May upfront, and the thing is, is that we're getting very close. We think it might be January, February where we start to break ground on these two projects. So we don't need the full 1.15 million for this year. So it's just freeing any money that does not need to be used up for the projects for operational needs. So nothing, nothing will suffer as a result of this change.
Okay, so what exactly is that project?
Oh, I'm sorry. These are the two, it's the Student Success Center to replace our long overdue construction of a new student, student center for students to hang out in. The building is really marginal right now and it's beyond its useful life. We're starting to have spalling and some of the roof is starting to come off. It really needs to be replaced, so that's one. And then the Engineering Annex to give the School of Engineering a place to meet, hold their classes, have true labs is the other, the other project.
Thank you for that information. The other question I have real quick would be, does the University of Guam, or did because we've already passed the FY '22 budget, can you tell us if there was been any excess or funding that was provided to the University of Guam that was not expended in FY '22?
There was not.
So you fulfilled your full amount that was budgeted to you in FY '22?
Yes.
Was there any, well, that's good, there's no excess, but are you in any kind of deficit?
Do you want to answer that? Okay. So last year, we had some HERF money, Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund, funds that we used during the year to offset a shortfall in our, in our budget. So this year, it's a struggle. We're still trying to figure out how we're going to get through the year with this current budget, and this is, this is one element of that. We're trying to explore everything we can do to try and be creative and try to get through the year, but this is going to be a very tight budget this year.
So to my question again, is there any deficit?
I would say at this point, there's not a deficit, but that's a concern we have. There was not a deficit for last year.
Yes, that's the question, for 2022.
Right.
And well, by recognizing 2022 and looking at the concern in your face for FY '23, do you think there's a possibility of any deficit?
There is a possibility.
And what is that amount, a guesstimate?
We're thinking it could be between a million and a million and a half.
Okay. I thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll reserve my questions for the second round. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taitegui. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to the panel. So just maybe a question regarding, so I know that the bill basically allows you to have more flexibility in how you spend the funds because you don't need it right away, obviously, but what, what do you think you're going to be using it for? If you can predict, what is this money going to be used for in the interim?
Yeah, do you want to answer? Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much, Senator, for that question. We would be spending the funds based on the request that we had presented to this body in February, and obviously we would be working within what has been appropriated, which is less than our requests, but it would go towards basic general operational expenses, utilities, power, water. Those have increased tremendously significantly in this past fiscal year, and so we are in the process, like every month, it would be a very detailed monitoring process this fiscal year because the costs just really need to stay within budget, and so we're hoping that we would be able to get this flexibility. Thank you.
And so basically, just to kind of tag, tag on the question or follow-up question regarding deficit, so is a deficit because of the utility increase or is it for other reasons?
Yeah, so for FY '22, our budget went down two and a half million, so our money available for general operations was, was down, and we're still trying to recover from that. Utilities is, is going up, that's a challenge. Yeah, I mean, a lot of our costs are going up, but I think the main thing is just adapting to a lower budget level.
Okay. So you're mentioning that you had to offset costs, so what, what were you shifting the money from and to when you mentioned offsetting?
So last year, we, we had some federal funds that were allowed to be repurposed to other, other purposes, and so we, we took some of the Federal CARES Act money that we were receiving, and we were able to direct that to the current year operation expenses to offset the loss of revenues.
Okay. All right. And regarding the, so congratulations on getting the USD grant, by the way, that's a huge accomplishment. It's very difficult to get those grants. And so I know it was mentioned as far as the interest rate, but if you can kind of recap what the obligation is for that grant, or is it a grant or is it a loan?
It's a, it's a loan. So the interest rate is two and a quarter percent. It's going to end up being about a 31-year loan. The, the legislation we have now is saying that the money is being set aside through 2055, so it's, we expect to be completed in about two years, and so that would leave about 31 years of payment to repay the principal.
Okay. And so this amount, the capital improvement fund that's set aside in the Section 30, 13, sorry, of the budget bill, so this is going to cover the, I guess, the payments for both the Student Access Center as well as the...
That's correct.
So that's sufficient to cover, okay. All right. I think those are all my questions. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I also want to acknowledge that Senator Shelton, yourself, and Senator Terlahe were also co-sponsors of this bill in, in that effort after hearing the plight of the university, and, and my take is maybe to get a reiteration from UOG as they expressed their support in 340-36. They stated that it will not negatively impact its fiscal 2023 operations, and it does not change the level of appropriations provided to UOG for fiscal year 2023, and that while the annual payments for the 2020 USD loan is set to begin in fiscal year 2023, UOG intends to use the funds appropriated to UOG in the last public law via the continuing appropriation authorization contained in the appropriations from the Guam Educational Facilities Fund for the USD loan payments to be restored beginning of fiscal year 2024. Is that, is that right in its efforts? And you guys support this bill wholeheartedly?
That's true, yes. That's, everything's correct, and we support it wholeheartedly.
Okay. So again, again, changing the show to May would just give University of Guam the flexibility to move forward and work with, with all the payments, too. Right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask, in the event it's not available because it's going from mandating it to leaving it as an option, what other alternatives is UOG looking at to fund this? If this is to be used for your rental payments or your lease agreements? Is this for both buildings that you're anticipating to build?
This is for both, both buildings, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, the money will be there, this is just, anything that's not used is going to be freed up for the university to use. So, yeah, we don't, as long as we get our appropriations, the money will be, that money will be there.
And how long is this lease agreement? How many years are we looking at?
It's, it goes through 2055.
And this is for, this amount's going to cover both buildings?
Yes.
I don't know where we'll be in 2055, but, and when do you anticipate looking at construction? How soon will, if this passes?
Yeah, we think it's going to be January, February timeframe.
And are they going to be built simultaneously?
Yes.
Or they will be in, and with the Student Center, how will you accommodate in the And with the Student Center, how will you accommodate in the interim? Are they gonna just, I assume, I mean, I understand the age of the facility, are they gonna take it all down at one time?
Yes.
And how are you gonna accommodate some of the functions provided in that building in the interim?
Yeah, so we're working on, there's a meeting that might be going on right now, that they're still trying to figure out the complete logistics of that. We've talked about maybe putting, so EMSS is gonna take some dorm rooms, and in SGA, we're looking at, we might get them a container that they could use for this year, so we're putting some people in the English Language Institute building, so we're trying to stick people wherever we can to get through.
And what is your anticipated construction time for the buildings? Are there different construction times, or when do you anticipate completion and...
We're looking at about 18 months for the engineering annex and 24 months for the Student Center.
And where are they gonna be located? I mean, is the Student Center gonna be just adjacent to the existing footprint?
Right on top. We're knocking it down and building it back up.
Okay, right on the spot. And then also for the engineering building, we're in the, is it gonna be front of CNAS?
It's...
Or...
It would be west of CNAS and just south of the, like, the HSS building, so it'll be on University Drive. It's a current parking area that's right by CNAS.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Ada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the UOG folks for being here this afternoon. So just a couple of questions I have. So of the 1.158 million, how much are you looking at using for other purposes besides paying the lease-back agreement on this?
Yeah. We think we can use just about all of it. There's, we're not expecting much interest, and we already have some funds in the construction account to pay the debt service, so we think we can pretty much use the whole thing for our operations.
So then why was this initially put as the capital improvement fund for 1.1 million, knowing that you guys didn't need it, and now you're gonna use this for something else? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, initially, it's for capital improvement, now you're coming to the legislature asking us to give you the flexibility to use it for other purposes besides the lease-back payment?
Yeah, so this has been continuing language that we've had for several years as we've been trying to get to this point in this process, and so this language has been there for a number of years, and in past years, it was a separate appropriation, and for some years, there was just nothing made to us, because we knew that there wasn't gonna be any construction for that year, but last year and this year, the language says that it has to come out of our general operations appropriation, instead of the, I think it was the Territorial Education Facilities Fund in the past, and so because of that, this is taking away from our appropriation with this shell language, and it gives us more flexibility with the May language.
So that concern wasn't brought up to the Budget Chair prior to having, during the budget sessions this year?
We've had a lot of discussions about this.
And so now we're recognizing that we don't need to have this there now?
Right.
So for next year's budget discussions, will this language be in there, or will this section continuously be in there when it's not needed, or...
We'd like, hopefully, the whole section can be rewritten for next year, but if it's relatively the same, we're hoping next year could be May also, and then every time after that, we'd want shell in there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Duenez.
Just want to say, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the UOG folks that are here today. I think I'm pretty clear on this. I just wanted to make sure that we nail it down one more time. So essentially, what you're doing is you're anticipating the, you're anticipating the ability of the financing going forward, which will take care of that debt service, maybe in its entirety, and you need these resources for other needs, particularly because your budget did not meet what you requested.
Yep.
Pretty straightforward. So, and it's a carryforward, so it's just, you're gonna be relying on allotment control and allotment release, and so that's gonna be between you and the front office.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duenez. Speaker Chalauhi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the panel from UOG. I thought I heard you say earlier there were no, you had no excess from FY22. Is that correct? But didn't you also say that the lease payments may become due in January, or starting in January when the construction begins?
Projects are starting January, February. The projects are starting January and February.
But no lease payments will be due in FY23?
Yeah, it's, they will start once we draw down from our loan, and that, we think the number's gonna be very small for FY23.
And you said you were gonna cover that with what?
We have, we have some funds that have been set aside in the debt service fund, because we've received prior appropriations from the legislature.
Appropriations, right? So isn't that the FY22 excess money that was put there? Or you're saying, because of the language in the past bill, it was set into that fund? You have a special fund?
It is a special fund, yeah. So I'm, sorry, I'm saying in our general appropriations, there's, it was all spent. That money which was sent over is still, that's still in a separate fund.
Okay. And so you have enough in that special fund to cover in case the payments begin in 2023? And, all right, how much, what is your balance in that special fund?
It's about 2 million.
Okay. Are there any tuition increases? I remember before there were tuition increases planned, like, they had a schedule, right? They were gonna increase them, and then I remember the students kinda had a protest, but those were put on hold. Are they scheduled still, and what are those dates?
Yeah, at this point, there's nothing scheduled. I think we need to start discussing, I just think, going forward, there needs to be a discussion on that, and I'm hoping to begin that in the next few months with our board.
Okay, so there's nothing, no tuition increases are scheduled, right? All right. So allowing the university to use this for operations instead of for capital improvement funds, for me, Mr. Chair, I mean, I don't have a real objection to that, but I would like to put it somewhere that this is going to ensure that there are no tuition increases, at least during FY23, hopefully during FY24, because of this, right? And I know you're saying you're gonna have to look at that eventually, but I hope it's not this year, not in this situation, especially if we're gonna pass this bill. That would be my only comment or concern on that issue. But, so you think that the bulk, I mean, that this amount of payment, what was it, 1.15 million, is going to be due like FY24 or later?
Is gonna be due?
Well, it's going to, yeah, that you're gonna have to make these payments.
Yeah, I believe that by the end of '24, we will have...
Is that at the end of construction?
Yes.
So these aren't due until the end of construction?
No, no, I'm sorry. We have to make interest payments as we draw down the loan, and then it becomes interest and principal as soon as it's completed.
Okay, at the end of construction. That's what the 1.15 you're estimating, that will be the interest and principal, and interest alone is what?
For early years, I think it's probably about a million.
Oh, I thought you said it's very small.
No, okay, sorry. Okay, so interest for this year, I would be surprised if it's more than $100,000.
Okay.
Next year, it'll grow a little bit, and then every year, as we're paying the loan back, I think the interest is gonna start off being about a million.
Okay. All right. Do you think we can get your assurance that there will be no student tuition increases during this fiscal year 23?
I can't, I can't give that assurance.
All right. Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. No problem. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This concludes round one of questions. We'll move now to the second round. Senator Tiedecki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, the recent appropriation to the University of Guam CIP fund included Public Law 36-107 for FY2023 for 1.158,283, correct? And from a 24,789,158 general fund appropriation to UOG? Okay. And then Public Law 36-54, FY22, 500,000 from the Guam Territorial Education Facility Fund for 500,000, correct? And then in Public Law 35-99 for FY2021, was 500,000 from the Territorial Education Facilities Fund, and then in Public Law 35-36, FY2020, was 500,000 from the Territorial Facilities Fund. I remember in the budget in the FY, in, not FY, but 35th Guam Legislature, one of the budgets allowing University of Guam to be able to be part or get into a contract over 30 years, or 30 years, up to 30 years. With all the funding that, you know, that we've been providing for these projects, my biggest concern is that if we don't have the, if you don't have the money or generate the funding at the University of Guam to be able to cover these debts, that you'll be coming to the legislature, you know, to cover these debts. There's quite a bit of projects that are out there right now. I mean, look at, I just mentioned four right now, and so my concern is, right now, have you have a 30-year lease on anything right now, or agreement, not lease, I'm sorry, a contract for 30 years on a lease-back right now?
These two projects that we're discussing today, that are being partially funded with the USD loan, those are, those are both lease, lease-back.
Up to 30 years, correct? There are two projects that you have out there for 30 years, correct?
Yeah, actually, it's over 30 years. It's, there's gonna be a 31-year lease payback on both.
31. How is that possible when the law only grants you the ability to go 30 years?
Yeah, so these projects had been approved before that law went into place, and so these were specifically approved by the legislature, and at the time, it was up to 40 years.
Okay, I see. So right now, based on the law that was, that allowed you to go on a 30-year lease, has anything been awarded since? Not the one that was done prior, where the legislature was involved and approved it, but you were given the power to go ahead and go into a 30-year lease agreement? Have you exercised that right yet?
Yeah, so the only, we did a lease of the hatchery for 30 years, and, but that's money coming to the university.
Right, it's different, yeah, you know, where you have, you don't pay, you're receiving revenue. Okay, but nothing else so far at this time?
No.
Anything in the making in the next six months?
Not the six months. We are looking at a new dorm, and...
No, anything, any projects that you're looking at starting or even going into a contract in the next six months?
No.
Okay. You do realize, you know, we are in an artificial economy. I mean, I know it's been raining quite a bit of funds, but that rain came from the federal government, and that stopped. So it's important that we, you know, try to live within our means and recognize the fact that it's not going to be raining like this anymore, and our population, as well as I'm sure the University of Guam, is starting to see a decline, because our population is also declining as well. So we have to take into consideration, you know, when building any kind of other new buildings, about the population, our population, and how students are deciding to move to the mainland, and it's something I hope you take in consideration, because I would hate to see all these projects at the University of Guam and nobody put them in, you know? Population won't carry how much money we would have to pay on any debt. And I too am great concerned, for the record, any kind of tuition increase to our students, so I hope that's not gonna be the case. We're looking at still recovering in the next couple of years. So again, I thank you so much, the two of you, for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tiedecki. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question, because the language says may allocate, right? So does this, does the university have any intention of putting it in a, let's say, like a CD account to generate interest, and they can generally use that interest for other purposes, like a short-term liquid account? Is that something that was planned for this?
Yeah, probably not, that, so we do have some funds in CDs, but the money we get from the Department of Administration, the allotments we get, that it kinda goes into our general fund, and then it usually goes out right away, so there's not a lot of opportunity for...
Growing the money?
Tying those up, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then, how much dollar amount is estimated? So basically, you wanna allocate some funds, so what portion, what do you estimate the amount to be of this 1.15, 1.15 million that you're planning to use?
I think we're hoping to use the whole thing.
The whole thing?
I expect that the interest is, the max interest would be less than $100,000, so that we should be able to use pretty much all of this for operations.
Okay, 'cause when you do, when you start the construction, you're saying you're estimating the construction to be in January? Are you gonna be drawing down from that loan?
Yeah, so we committed some university funds for the project, and also the governor had committed some capital improvement funds that she has from the federal government, and so our plan is to use those first and then draw down on the loan last, and so it's likely that by the end of the year, we won't have drawn much down on the loan.
Okay. I just think I need to think about this a little bit more, because, okay, so you're basically gonna postpone interest, you're able to postpone the interest, but now you have this 1.1 million to use for other purposes. So, yeah, I guess maybe the question is, will moving this money around reduce the debt burden that UOG has? Will it affect the debt burden in any way?
It's, it's really not. Yeah, it's just gonna... Yeah, it's really not gonna impact the debt burden.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so that's, so basically, you're gonna use it for expenses that need to be paid off, and not...
Right.
Not necessarily use it, because, yeah, so I guess maybe, maybe if I can get some clarification, when you are expending money, is a goal trying to reduce the debt burden necessarily from...
Thank you, Senator. So I think maybe what might be causing the discon... Thank you, Senator. So, I think maybe what might be causing the disconnect is that this is all coming from our general operations appropriation. And in prior years, the appropriation to support the funding into the Capital Improvements Fund had come from the Territorial Education and Facilities Fund. And so, when this had happened, we knew that, okay, if, when, when it became May, or shall, in FY 2022, we had been setting aside the funds from our FY 2022 appropriation to fund the lease payment. And we haven't made any payments on the lease. And so, as VP Randy had mentioned, we're anticipating to start paying some point in FY 23. So, all of the funds, I, we, I guess we can't pay ahead of time? If that's what you're trying to, if that's what you're asking? Because we won't, we won't be making payment until we start drawing down from the loan, right?
Yeah, I understand. So, yeah, this, this particular capital improvement fund was specific for these two projects?
That's correct.
Okay, so then, there, it, since it hasn't been built, then there's no debt?
We haven't drawn down from the loan, even though that there's, like, we've signed papers and things of that sort, and...
So, is it accruing interest at this time? No interest?
We don't.
And it only accrues interest when?
When we draw down.
Draw down, okay. So, okay, so, there's a way to control that? So, you're not really, you're not increasing the debt burden by doing this? Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I did wanna ask, with regards to any existing buildings that have been built, do you still have any, I guess, debt to be paid on? I mean, some of them have been there a while, but, you know, 30, 40-plus years is a long time. And if so, what's, what's the annual amount? Is there anything more owed on any of the other facilities that have since been constructed?
Yeah, so, our, the SPPA building, the Leon Guerrero building is, we're still, we're still paying on that, and it's about 775,000 a year. The, that's a USD alone, and, yeah, I believe that has another 14 years, 13 years to go on that.
And so, that's, is that the only one remaining of the...
Yeah, right.
Okay, about, give or take, close to 800,000 a year? That's the remaining loan to be paid?
Yeah, and that's coming from the Territorial Education Facilities Fund that Senator Tadegui had been talking about, the, the 500,000 annual appropriation that goes.
And the other facilities that have since been built are all, they're all paid off now? Well, that's good. That's good news. Okay, thank you. Appreciate the information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator, Senator Duñez. Senator Torres. Madam Speaker.
I'm, I'm just trying to think, and maybe you can help me with, what, if you were going to propose a tuition increase, what factors are you going to be laying out that requires that? I guess I'm wondering if there's any shifts in operations that can be made? You said you were gonna, you were already shifting to manage with the change in appropriation, right? And especially if these lease payments start becoming due? Sorry, they're not lease payments anymore. They're loan payments, yeah. And, and... Yeah, I guess I just want to see if there's some factors you can put on the table. So, we heard that there are increased utility costs, right? Are there others?
It seems like all of our costs have been, have been going up, and it, it seems like they're gonna keep going up for a while. The, even, I mean, even these construction costs, we've had a lot of difficulties. It was gonna be fully funded by a 21.7 million dollar loan, and then we had to go to the governor and ask for additional money. So, yeah, I, I think a lot of what we do going forward is gonna be conditioned on what we get from the legislature going forward. We, we were, we were expecting more money for this year, and that caught us off-guard. And so, our, our thought is that we need to start talking about tuition again. But we haven't, there really hasn't been a discussion yet on, on that, so...
Okay, and then my other question is, so, this appropriation had also been made last, well, in FY 22, it had been made, and you said that was deposited into the special fund. There's about a million-dollar balance, but it was also made in FY 21, right?
Yeah, I don't believe we got the money in '21.
1.158283, FY 21.
Was that, that wasn't received?
Yeah, so, my, I was just gonna ask why, if you received that money in FY 21 and you haven't been able to use it yet, or weren't, you know, those didn't become due yet, why isn't the balance of that special fund 2 million dollars versus 1 million dollars?
Yeah, so, we, we, we've had some, like, even going back to FY 15, FY 16, we got, we got some money built up in that. But also, at the same time, we were paying some money out for the projects. We, we had done some design work. We had done some surveying work. So, we, we, we had been receiving some funding from the legislature as part of the, the 1.15283. And, and then we had been expending some, so that now, after, after all this time, we have about 2 million in that fund, and that can cover us through this upcoming, upcoming year.
Okay, if it's 2 million, then it makes sense. But I thought earlier you said 1 million, 2 million. Okay, then. So, that would at least be the two, the FY 22 and the FY 21 million dollars each?
Yeah, we don't think we got the money for '21, but I, I can't swear to that, so...
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Speaker Chalahi. This concludes round two. We'll move now to, well, first, we will dismiss the panel, and then we'll go to round three, which is for any potential amendments or closing remarks. So, we'll take a short recess. Okay, we are now on the third and final round. We'll begin the last round on the front row. Senator Duñez.
Sí, sí, mase, Mr. Chairman. I, I think this proposal in the bill is pretty straightforward. I wanna appreciate the University of Guam basically wanting to use whatever resources that they can find, you know, having stated that, you know, they, their appropriation levels weren't to what they requested, but they're managing their cash. And I think just, that's an appropriate thing. I know there was some discussions on the issues of, you know, holding down on, on tuition increases. I, I agree with that perspective. I think that's gonna be up to us going forward. You know, we, we see, of course, there's always gonna be an anticipation that we have to continue to hold the line and be frugal. But in these areas where we have that potential going forward, when we go through the budget process next time with YOGI, you know, I think that robust debate can take place there. But I, like I said, I do agree with the comments. But I think that with this 1.2 million dollars being available, you know, to be used for shortfalls that they may have, relying on that carryforward and that allotment control, I, I think that it's a very reasonable proposal. And so, I look forward to, you know, voting on the bill. And like I said, once again, I, I think it's gonna be up to us to really dig in and, in this next fiscal year, or whatever, whoever moves forward and, and handles that next year, to really work closely and have, you know, a rigorous debate on that and making sure that if, if we're going to continue to support the students, that, you know, this body is the one stepping up to the plate as well. So, with that, I just, I think YOGI did a great presentation today and represented themselves well. And I think they're doing what they can with what they got. And then, it's gonna be nice to see them break ground, hopefully, in January on the Student Center and the, and the other buildings. Sí, sí, mase, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Torres. Speaker Chalahi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm trying to send in a floor amendment. It's to add the words to the end of the paragraph that would say, "or for its operations to offset or forego tuition increases." So, the language altogether would be that the 1.158, instead of shall, the bill changes it to "may be allocated from the general fund appropriation to the Capital Improvements Fund." And then, my language would add, "or for its operations to offset or forego tuition increases." And they've already stated that they, they want it for operations. And so, I just want to put a gentle reminder in there if, that, that is our intention here by allowing this change to, to forego any tuition increases. Yeah, it's in, it's in writing already. I just think it's not past...
It's being submitted?
Yeah, correct.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and proceed, and then we'll come back when, when it's in writing. Senator Ada, you're recognized. Senator Brown. Senator Perez. Senator Tadegui. Senator Blas. Okay, we'll take a short recess. Okay, we'll take a short recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm trying to send in a floor amendment. It's to add the words to the end of the paragraph that would say, "or for its operations to offset or forego tuition increases." So the language altogether would be that the 1.158, instead of shall, the bill changes it to may be allocated from the General Fund Appropriation to the Capital Improvements Fund. And then my language would add, "or for its operations to offset or forego tuition increases." And they've already stated that they want it for operations, and so I just want to put a gentle reminder in there that that is our intention here by allowing this change to forego any tuition increases. I just think it's not past...
It's being submitted?
Yeah, correct.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and proceed, and then we'll come back when it's in writing. Senator Ada, you're recognized. Senator Brown. Senator Perez. Senator Titegwe. Senator Blas. Okay, we'll take a short recess. Okay, we are back. Senator, excuse me, Speaker Chalali, you're recognized on your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The amendment's been passed out, and so again, it's to add, so the bill itself changes the word shall to may, meaning that the 1.15 million may be used by UOG for the Capital Improvements Fund. So I'm adding to the bottom of that paragraph the words, "or for its operations to offset or forego tuition increases." So the "or for its operations" is consistent with what they've been asking, that they want it either for the capital improvement or for their operations, and I'm adding in the words, of course, "to offset or forego tuition increases," which I just hope is going to impress upon them our intention here at the legislature, that we are hoping they will forego these tuition increases during this fiscal year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the amendment, anyone on the amendment? There's no one on the... Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to ask a question, Mr. Chair of the speaker sponsoring this. Adding on "for its operations to offset or forego tuition increases," does this mean now the university can't do any tuition increases? I'm just trying to understand the Fino English here.
Does the author yield?
I think that would be up to legal interpretation, right, by the university. However, my interpretation is that it doesn't preclude one. I don't even think we can do that because of accreditation issues. However, I do hope that when we, you know, allow diversion of the capital improvement funds over to operations, that that is going to be foremost undermined by this language, and that it will help them to forego tuition increases because we are paying for additional operations. We're subsidizing those.
Well, I guess, I mean, yes, a lot of things are up to interpretation, but I mean, I kind of read it that it is, I mean, to forego tuition increases. You could say we're advising them to forego tuition increases, but this can also be interpreted as we're preventing them from raising tuition. And I'm, you know, with everything else going up, of course, I don't think there's anybody here that is in favor of raising costs, certainly for education or to go to the university, but, you know, I just wouldn't want to be put in a situation of them coming back and saying the legislature is trying to interfere where we should not with regards to their addressing their tuition needs for the school and, you know, waive accreditation and the impact of that, that we're interceding on it. Because you can interpret it two or three different ways, but it does kind of appear that we're saying if they use this money that they should forego tuition increases. That's how I see it. So I just think we need to be mindful of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Anyone else on the amendment? If there's no one else, Speaker, you may close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want the record to be very clear. I do hope they will forego tuition increases, and if this language accomplishes that, then it's excellent, in my view. That's exactly what we want to do. Thank you. So I hope my colleagues will support this.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the amendment, are there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, that's the end of round three, except for the closing, which is reserved for the primary mover of the bill. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I thank the discussion for coming on this afternoon, more importantly, to help the University of Guam, and thank my co-sponsors again for being a part of that, working closely with the Oversight Chair on Finance and Budgeting, Senator Joe S. Augustine, Senator Amanda Shelton, yourself, Mr. Chair, Senator Rigel, and of course, Senator Pito Chalali, again, showing that we want to work closely with the University of Guam and making sure that this opportunity is afforded their way. And I hope that my colleagues will support this effort, Mr. Chair. And with that being said, I move that this bill... Do I rise now? Thank you. I move, Mr. Chair, that we rise from, no, on this bill, right? Just on this bill. I move that we rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation that Bill Number 340-36 LS, as amended, in the Committee of the Whole be placed in the third reading voting file.
On that motion, are there any objections?
No objection.
Seeing and hearing none, motion carries.
So do I do the other one? We're doing it one by one?
We'll take a moment's recess.
We're back from recess. We are back on the second reading file on Bill 231, sorry, 340-36 LS. Vice Speaker Tina Winyambarz, you are recognized.
Tijilus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I wish to report to the body after the deliberation on Bill Number 340-36 LS and then, as amended, in the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation of the Committee and Whole to place onto the third reading voting file, Madam Speaker, if I may.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Tijilus Massey, Madam Speaker.
We're now still on second reading. We're back on Bill Number 298-36 LS, introduced by Senators Chalina Cruz Nelson and Jose Pito Chalali. Senator Nelson's not present. Senator Rigel, you are recognized.
Point of order, Madam Speaker, I believe that motion was to set the bill aside. Does that mean it's set aside, or does that mean it's moved to the bottom of the queue again?
It was moved to the bottom of the agenda, and we've reached the bottom of the agenda. So we're again back to all the bills that have been set aside. So Bill Number 298-36 LS is regarding the Port Authority. The Executive Director of the Port Authority was here earlier. There was a motion to set this bill aside. Is there any motion on this bill, 298-36 LS?
Madam Speaker, if I may, without consultation to the main author of the legislation and your statement earlier that the members from Port were here, I just ask again that we just set this bill aside. We do have several other bills to entertain, and I'm hoping that by that time, all the parties can come back again. So on a motion just to set it aside at this time, Madam Speaker...
A motion to set aside Bill 298-36 LS. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, bill is set aside. We're now on Bill Number 311-36 COR. This is a bill introduced by Senators Frank Blas Jr. and Joe S. Augustine. Senator Blas, you are recognized. Or, I'm sorry, if we are ready to proceed with the Committee of the Whole?
Can I go ahead and introduce it on the floor, and then I request?
We normally go into Committee of the Whole automatically if this is a Committee of the Whole bill, but I will allow it. Senator Blas, you are recognized on Bill 311-36 COR.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move that we allow the body to deliberate and discuss Bill Number 311-36 COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation and Housing, introduced by myself and Senator Joe S. Augustine, is an act to add a new Chapter 25 to Title I Guam Code Annotated relative to establishing a Guam Criminal Law and Procedure Review Commission for purpose of updating Title I and Title IX of the Guam Code Annotated. Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, I move that in order to be able to discuss this, that we resolve into the committee or go back into the Committee of the Whole for the purposes of discussing this bill.
All right. That motion is valid, however, I'm informed that there are no panel members currently present for this panel.
So, Madam Speaker, then I would move that we'll go ahead and, I know there is an attempt to be able to contact them, and until they are here, then we can go ahead and time, you know...
If I, if, sure. Can I inquire, what time do we expect the panel for Bill 311?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I have a recess, please?
One minute recess.
(pause) (end of transcript)
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
See, Jules Massey, Madam Speaker.
We're now still on second reading. We're back on Bill Number 298-36 LS, introduced by Senators Telenia Cruz Nelson and Jose Pito Terlahi. Senator Nelson's not present. Senator Rigel, you are recognized.
Point of order, Madam Speaker, I believe that motion was to set the bill aside. Does that mean it's set aside or does that mean it's moved to the bottom of the queue again?
It was moved to the bottom of the agenda and we've reached the bottom of the agenda. So we're again back to all the bills that have been set aside. So Bill Number 298-36 LS is regarding the Port Authority. The Executive Director of the Port Authority was here earlier. There was a motion to set this bill aside. Is there any motion on this bill, 298-36 LS?
Madam Speaker, if I may, without consultation to the main author of the legislation and your statement earlier that the members from Port were here, I just ask again that we just set this bill aside. We do have several other bills to entertain and I'm hoping that by that time, all the parties can come back again. So on a motion just to set it aside at this time, Madam Speaker...
On a motion to set aside Bill 298-36 LS. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, bill is set aside. We're now on Bill Number 311-36 COR. This is a bill introduced by Senators Frank Blas Jr. and Joe S. Augustine. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam...
Or, I'm sorry, if we are ready to proceed with the Committee of the Whole?
Can I go ahead and introduce it on the floor and then I request?
We normally go into Committee of the Whole automatically if this is a Committee of the Whole bill, but I will allow it. Senator Blas, you are recognized. On Bill 311-36 COR.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move that we allow the body to deliberate and discuss Bill Number 311-36 COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation and Housing, introduced by myself and Senator Joe S. Augustine, is an act to add a new Chapter 25 to Title I Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing a Guam Criminal Law and Procedure Review Commission for purpose of updating Title A and Title IX of the Guam Code Annotated. Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, I move that in order to be able to discuss this, that we resolve into the committee or go back into the Committee of the Whole for the purposes of discussing this bill.
All right. That motion is valid. However, I'm informed that there are no panel members currently present for this panel.
So Madam Speaker, then I would move that we'll go ahead and I know there is an attempt to be able to contact them and until they are here, then we can go ahead and time, you know...
If I... Sure. Can I inquire, what time do we expect the panel for Bill 311?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I have a recess, please?
One minute recess. We're back from recess. We are on Bill Number 311. Senator Blas, you had the floor. You've motioned to go into the Committee of the Whole. The Committee of the Whole panel is not going to be available till 3:00 p.m., we've been informed.
So, you know, Madam Chair, I think it's important that the Committee of the Whole, the panelists are here, there. This is, you know, an appropriations measure. It does involve appropriations and based on our standing rules, we cannot proceed forward without that discussion and standing rules. So, you know, recognizing that they're not going to be here at 3:00 o'clock, I, you know, request that it's either we recess until 3:00 and then come in or we, you know, we set this aside till 3:00 and advance and move on to another bill.
All right. I'm advised there are no panels available for any bill at this time. And so I've asked the Committee on Appropriations Acting Chair to make sure that that does not happen as we continue a session. We only have appropriations bills left. So based on that, Senator Blas, we're going to recess until 3:00 p.m. today, so about 15, 20 minutes. Recession until 3:00.